Just reminded that we are being recorded and it has been livestreamed. So if you can just make sure that your phones are switched off or at the very least on silence, just in case it affects the recording. This is the second part of the annual meeting. We will be finding out what our responsibilities are over the next five years. So the first item on the agenda is declaration of interest. Does anyone have anything to declare? Before that, I have apologies. I've received apologies from councillor Margaret Merly-Roberts, councillor Gary Pritchard and councillor Paul Ellis. Is anyone aware of any other apologies?
No.
No? Okay, so declaration of interest, any declarations of interest by anyone? No? So on to the announcements. I wish well to everyone who's competing in the Estelle de l'Ordre at the last meeting, and I'm still wishing them well those competing this week, but in the meeting last week. Previous chair wasn't with us, councillor Glen Haines, but he is present today. So I'd just like to invite him to say a word or two, as he is here today. Over to you Glen.
For that chair, I'll try and keep it brief. I suppose there was none more surprised than me that I went on holiday, which I booked last year as chair. And when I came back a few days ago, I found out that there'd been a coup in my absence and that I'd been deposed as chair. But there we are, these things happen, don't they? So it's been a good year while I was chair, in some difficult circumstances at times. But I've done my year and happy to hand over to David Roberts as the chair and will support him in any way possible that I can. Thank you for that chair.
Thank you very much Glen. And I wish you well for the next five years. On then to item three, the membership of the executive in accordance with paragraph 4.1.1.2.7 of the constitution. The leader is going to inform us who will sit on the executive as well as their portfolio responsibilities. Over to you leader. Good afternoon, everyone, to the members. Councillor Carwyn Jones, Economic Development, Tourism. Councillor Robin Williams, Responsibility for Finance, Corporate Finance and Customer Experience. Councillor Ian Williams, Responsible for Education and the Welsh Language. Councillor Nicola Roberts, Responsible for Planning, Public Protection and Climate Change. Councillor Alan Memmeri, Responsible for Housing Services and Public Safety, Community Safety. Councillor Gary Pritchard, Responsible for Children's Services and Young People. Councillor Alan Roberts, Responsible for Adult Services. And councillor David Riz-Tomas, Highways, Properties and Waste. Thank you. I'm on mute, apologies. Does anyone have any comments to make on those appointments? I can't see any hands up. Would anyone like to say a word? Oh, Dylan Williams, the chief executive. Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you're all well. Can I just thank the leader for confirming those appointments and wish them all well in their roles over the period? On behalf of those officers, we look forward to working with you all and moving forward with our work. Thank you. As I say, I can't see all your, any hands up. So I take it that there aren't any further comments. So we can move on now to item four. And item four is to appoint a chair of the Democratic Services Committee for the Civic Year. I'm not sure how many nominations there are. Are there any nominations? Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, Carwyn. I'd like to propose councillor Keith Roberts. I'd like to nominate councillor Keith Roberts. Do we have a second there? Can I second that proposal? I think the councillor Alain Morris-Jones was going to do so, but I can't see that he's present this afternoon. Thank you very much. So is there another nomination? No? Okay, we'll move to the votes. So unless there's any objection, we'll take it that we're all in agreement or that we agree with that decision. Does anyone wish to abstain? If you can just make yourself known, if you're against or if you want to abstain. I can't see any hands up. So I take it that we have elected Keith Roberts. Do we have to elect a vice chair? Oh, we'll do that later on. Would Cleese like to say a few words?
Well, for the first time in my life, I've been speechless, but we won't go into that now. But thank you very much. Thank you for your confidence in me. And I hope I do you proud in the role as chair of this committee. Thank you.
Good afternoon, councillor Keith Roberts.
Thank you very much councillor Keith Roberts. I'm sure you'll be excellent in the role. So on now to item five, to confirm the scheme of delegation. The chairperson. So in the constitution, paragraph 3.5, it's quite a lengthy paragraph. So if you want to look at it in detail, then may I suggest that you have a look at that. But it is listed there. I'm not sure whether we have to vote on this. Okay, I take it that nobody objects or wants to abstain. Or if you want to do that, please make yourself known by raising a virtual hand. Okay, so I can't see anyone abstaining. So I'll take that as a yes and move on. The next thing is the programme of ordinary meetings of the county council. And the leader will propose this. Yes, thank you. I propose that the council confirms this programme for the meetings for the year to come, 13th of September 2022 for 2 o'clock, 6th of December 2022, 2 o'clock, 9th of March 2023, 2 o'clock. And then the annual meeting in May 2023 and dates to be confirmed. Do we have a second there? I second the proposal. Thank you councillor Carwyn Jones. So on that, do we need to vote on this as well? Also, we'll go through the same thing again. So we'll take it up by affirmation. So if you want to, if you've got any objection or want to abstain, then make yourself known, please. Going on to item seven, political balance and appointments of councillors to committees. I'd like to invite the interim head of democratic services, Mr. Lewis Howard Hughes to say a few words or to present the report. Thank you, good afternoon. I hope you've had a copy of the report. I'll go through the main points if that's acceptable. Point one, the council needs to review the political balance arrangements on its committees annual. Two, the local government and housing act 1989 sets out the main principles governing political balance, which are noted in the report. Three, the position in terms of group membership is as follows, following the elections on the 5th of May, applied company 21, Labour 3, Group Annual 4, Anglesey Independent 7, including one Liberal Democrat. Four, the matrix attached sets out the entitlement of seats on each committee. Point five, the total number of seats to be allocated is 124. Point six, we need to ensure compliance in line with the principles noted in paragraph two of the report. Seven, any political group on the council can only allocate the seats it receives under the political balance arrangements to its own members and cannot allocate to a councillor who is not a member of the same political group. And then lastly, point eight, in accordance with the political management protocol, 5.8 in the council's constitution, group leaders have been consulted on political management arrangements. Thank you. You're on mute, Chair. Thank you very much for that. So this will happen after this meeting. Every committee will meet. Of course, at the moment, they don't have a chair. So I'll start the meeting on their behalf. And then the first thing they'll do is elect the chair. The chair of that committee will elect the vice chair. But I am going to remind everyone of the membership of each committee moving forward. I'll ask the people who are members of a specific committee to put their, leave their mics on and put their videos on and for everyone else to just turn off their videos whilst that is being done. But this will happen after point eight. So this is what will happen. So I think we've finished with this for now. Can I propose, Chair, that we confirm the arrangements regarding political balance on the number of seats to each group under the local government act 1989? And that the group leaders inform the deputy leader and interim democratic services officer if there's any change in memberships, membership of committees. And I'm aware that councillor Ian Williams has turned this already in relation to, oh no, sorry, this is in relation to external bodies. I second the proposal, Chair. Thank you very much to both of you. So that's item seven done. Okay, there's been a proposal on second there, so you want to vote? But we'll accept that it's the reports by affirmation. So if you object or if you want to abstain, can you make yourself known, please? I'm just trying to look on the screen. I can't see any hands up. So we'll accept it by affirmation and move forward. Point eight, appointments to outside bodies. Again, there's a report by the interim democratic services officer, Mr. His Howard Hughes. Again, I hope you've all received a copy of the report. The appointments of members to external bodies. Part 5.1 of the constitution notes the arrangements for appointing to external bodies. There are two categories of appointments. The first are made by the council. The second are those that have to be member of the executive to serve on those bodies. Appointments are made by the leader. There is also other roles and specific responsibilities. For example, in terms of young people, these are to promote activities and they are listed under the champion's heading. The appointments to external bodies will be for a period of five years until the next election in May 2027. And in according to an annual review by the council and executive, the members should note that the frequency of meetings will vary and that term will be held every quarter at least. Then the second part of the report, the matters, external, local external bodies. In relation to any external body, if its activities link to a specific ward, the councillors relevant to those wards will agree and appoint individuals. The protocol was adopted in March 2020. Inter of school governors. If they have been re-elected in the May elections, then the elected members will continue to represent the council on governing bodies until August 2022, including appointments. The education skills and young people director will deal with this issue along with group leaders. The new appointments will come to force at the 1st of September 2022. Group leaders and the leader will meet. They will, the meeting was held, will be held on Friday, the 27th of June. The table in the reports includes the name of, there is one change to number 20 in the table, the standards committee councillor David Riz-Tomas. Is there instead of councillor David Roberts? Does the leader of the council propose that we accept the report? Yes. I second that, Chair. Are there any comments? Chair, am I handed up? Aye. Over to you. Thank you. Can I firstly apologise that I couldn't access the meeting? And can I apologise to councillor Keith Roberts? I was supposed to second his, him as chair of the democratic services committee. So I apologise for not being able to join the meeting. May I thank the leader for giving members of my group roles on these bodies? I want to recognise this straight away and I'm happy to do so at this meeting. The only thing I have, I know you've got the majority, but there are three changes to the membership of the standards committee in relation to representation stand bias. I know there isn't a rule that you have to allocate one seat to my group, but I would ask you to reconsider this issue because in the previous council, there was a member of the Labour Party on the standards committee and one from the other group. Both are now from your groups. I will be voting in favour of this paper, but I just wanted to make that comment regarding the opposition. Would Tino Smithy like to come back just to confirm that there has only been one change since the names have been published? The changes had been done before they were published as part of other things that have changed and we've had legal advice and there is nothing, we're not going against legislation. We've made sure that everything is correct and they are acceptable. So just for the public who are watching this, to be aware that we have ensured that everything is all right. Mr. Chair, if I could respond to that, nobody said that anything illegal had happened, but just to make the balances and check, it would have been fairer. Thank you. With any luck, hopefully we won't need to use the standards committee. So hopefully if we all behave, everything will be okay. So again, we want to vote on this. And again, if you want to abstain or if you object, then obviously please make yourself known. I'm scrolling and looking at the screen to see if there are any hands up. So I'll take it that we accept the report by affirmation and that we are happy with those appointments. So please don't disappear because that's the end of the agenda. But of course, we need to go through the membership of the committees and we want to elect chairs and vice chairs. So I'm going to read out the names of the members of the committees. And the first one is the corporate scrutiny committee. And then I'll ask you to keep your cameras on and ask everyone else to switch off the cameras and go on mute. I will ask the officers, Dylan Williams and dropping the solicitor and his Howard Hughes and the leader to stay on. So the names are Geraint Beb, Neville Evans, David Jones, Dracula Wies, Theo Wen, Alwyn Watson, Arvind Win, David Roberts, Keith Roberts, Douglas Fowler, Alain Morris-Jones and Robert Llewellyn Jones. And I do apologise, I should have called them you all councillors. So if everyone else can just switch off their cameras and go on mute. And I can see that some members haven't switched off their cameras. Is Jeff Evans a member of this committee? If not, please can you switch, turn off your camera? Jeff is on mute, I think.
Apologies, but I can't find the logo for switching off the camera.
Okay.
Is it stop video?
No, yeah, put some left, stop video, that's the one.
Thank you. And you can now go on mute. Okay, so we're all here. What we need to do, do we have a nomination for a chair?
Tell me, when are you going through all of this? Where do you know?
Chair, it gives me pleasure to congratulate you on being elected chair of the council for the coming year. Also, it gives me pleasure to nominate councillor Robert Llewellyn Jones as chair of this committee for the year to come. Councillor Robert Llewellyn has served his area for the longest period in the history of the council, county council and as previously for the Borough Council, he's fulfilled a number of different roles during his period with the council. So it gives me pleasure to propose Robert Llewellyn Jones as chair of the corporate scrutiny committee for Anglesey County Council for the coming year. Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for that. Do we have a second there?
Yes, I'd like to, well, I would have liked to have seconded that.
And for this.
Unfortunately councillor Jeff Evans, you are not a member of this committee, so you can't second that. So we have a chair. I can see all your faces this time. Does anyone object or want to abstain? If so, can you please make yourself known? So I can't see anyone. So I take it that we have elected councillor Robert Llewellyn Jones as chair. So I'll congratulate the councillor and then ask him to elect a vice chairman. Thank you very much, Chair. It gives me pleasure to be appointed chair to this important committee. This is the first time for me to chair this committee and I look forward to working with everyone to try and making sure that we make the right decisions in everything we do. It will be a challenge, I'm sure, but I'm looking forward. So we need to elect a vice chair. Do we have a nomination? Chair, I would like to elect councillor David Edwin Jones as vice chair. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have a second there? I would happen to like to second that proposal. Thank you very much for that. So it gives me pleasure to work with the councillor and I'm sure we will work as a team. And I'm looking forward to things, for things to come. Thank you all.
Well, we're in twirl, but we've done it.
Sure then, that's the end of this meeting. So I'm going to ask everyone else if they can turn their cameras on again? Or if they are aware, if they're on the partnership and the generations group in the committee, they can stay on. But it's nice to see that you're all still here. Okay, so partnership and regeneration scrutiny to committee, the members are councillor Gwilymo Jones, councillor Non-David, councillor Eirin Morris, councillor Treble Lloyd Hughes, councillor John Ivan Jones, councillor Dylan Riis, councillor Margaret Merly-Roberts, councillor Ken Taylor, councillor Pip O'Neill, councillor Paul Ellis, I don't think he's here, and councillor Jeff Evans and councillor Derek Owen. So I'll chair the first part of the meeting and then I'll hand over. So we'll ask everyone else to switch off their cameras again. So the first thing I mean to do is to elect the chair. I'm just going to look at the screen and confirm. I think we're all here. There are a few apologies for this meeting. Sorry, I'm getting a bit confused because I can see some of the screen, half of the screen. Okay, is there a nomination for the chair of the partnership and regeneration committee? Thank you, Chair. I would like to propose councillor Dylan Riis as chair. Do we have a second there?
I'll happily second that.
Thank you councillor Pip O'Neill. There aren't any other nominations, so we move to vote, but again, by affirmation. Are there any objections? If so, can you make yourself known or if you want to abstain? I'm scrolling backwards and forward and I think we're all in agreement. So I'll take that as confirmation that we have elected the chair. And I'll ask the chair, I'm going to congratulate him first. And I'm going to hand over to him. Thank you, David. And can I thank, thank you all for the support. And it gives me pleasure to chair the partnership and regeneration scrutiny committee. And can I also thank councillor Alain Morris-Jones? Certainly I've benefited and gained a lot of experiences in being his vice chair as part of the corporate scrutiny committee over the past five years. We've worked well together, so thank you for that. Moving on now to elect a vice chair, is there a nomination, please? Good afternoon, Chair. I'd like to propose councillor Gwilymo Jones as vice chair. Thank you very much, John Ivan. Is there a second there? I'd like to second, Chair. I'd like to second Chair. Thank you very much councillor Eirin Morris. Are there any objections or does anyone want to abstain? No, so I'd like to congratulate councillor Gwilymo Jones as vice chair. Thank you very much for that. Thank you. It gives me great, great privilege. Thank you very much Gwilym and I take it then it's the end of the meeting. And we're moving on now to the next committee. So if I can ask people who are on the planning and orders committee to turn their cameras on and for everyone else to switch off their cameras. The names are Geraint Beb, Neville Evans, Trevor Lloyd Hills, John Ivan Jones, Jackie Lewis, Ken Taylor, Alwyn Watson, Robyn Williams, David Roberts, Glynn Haynes, Jeff Evans, Robert Llewellyn Jones and Liz Wood. And I think we've all, you've all turned off your cameras or kept them on. Okay, so I'll chair the first part of the meeting and I'm asking for nominations for Chair. Chair, can I propose councillor Neville Evans as Chair of the Planning and Orders Committee? Thank you. Do we have a second? Happy to second that proposal. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to vote and again, we'll do this by affirmation. If you want to abstain or if you want to object, then make yourself known. I can't see any hands up. So we can confirm the appointment of Neville Evans as Chair and I'd like to hand over congratulate councillor Evans and hand over to him to elect the vice chair. Thank you very much councillor David Roberts and thank you to you all for the nomination and for I look forward to working with you all. Moving on then, can I ask for nominations for vice chair? Can I propose councillor Glynn Haynes please? Thank you. Is there a second? I'm happy to second that Chair. Are there any further nominations or are we all happy with this? I can't see any hands up, so can I congratulate councillor Glynn Haynes as vice chair of the Planning and Orders Committee? And I look forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Thank you for that Chair and like to reciprocate. I look forward to working with you all and glad to be back on the planning committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So I'll invite members of the licensing committee. I think it's exactly the same membership, but again, we need to go through the votes. So we just need to confirm, is it going to be the same chairperson for for the licensing committee? I think traditionally the licensing committee has the same chair as the planning committee, so if there aren't any objections or abstentions, then may I suggest, and I can't see any hands up, so I take it that Neville, councillor Neville Evans is also Chair of the Licensing Committee. And then he should elect a vice chair for the Licensing Committee. Neville, over to you again. Thank you very much David. Once, thank you again for the nomination and your confidence in me. May I ask for nominations for the vice chair? I'll nominate councillor Glynn Haynes as vice chair of the Licensing Committee. Thank you Robyn. Is there a second? I'm happy to second again Chair. Thank you very much Ken. Once again, may I congratulate councillor Glynn Haynes? And again, I look forward to working with you on the Licensing Committee as well. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you councillor Neville Evans and Glynn Haynes. Okay, we're moving on to the next committee, governance and audit. So the Chair, it has to be a lay member. So the membership is councillor Geraint Beb, councillor Neville Evans, David Jones, Eirin Morris, Marcus Roberts, David Roberts, Keith Roberts, Liz Wood and then the lay members Dylan Evans, William Parry, Sharon Warrns and Michael Wilson. If you can all turn your cameras on.
Do you have, to the world Sharon Warren?
I can't see Sharon Warrns. Is she present? She's sent her apologies to, unfortunately she has a hospital appointment today. Are the other elected lay members present? I can see Dylan Evans and Michael Wilson are here. I haven't received any apologies from Mister William Parry. I can't see him on the screen. Do we have to have a quorum of lay members? No? Only a quorum of elected members, so we can carry on. So I'll chair the first part and so elect a chair from the lay members, is there a nomination? Thank you Chair, can I propose Dylan Evans as Chair of the Governance and Audit Committee? Thank you. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Thank you. Are there any further nominations? No? Okay. If you've got any objection or if you want to abstain, please can you make yourself known? I'm looking at the screen and I think we're all in agreement. So by affirmation, I'm happy to elect Dylan Evans as Chair and I will hand over to him to chair the rest of the meeting.
Can I thank you very much? It's an honour for me to be the first lay member as Chair of the Governance and Audit Committee. I will do my best to fulfill my responsibilities. And I hope that I will be thorough and fair throughout my term. Thank you very much indeed. I think it's now my task to ask for nominations as vice chair of the Governance and Audit Committee.
May I propose councillor Eirin Morris as vice chair please?
Thank you. Do we have a second please?
Yes, I will second that.
Thank you councillor Roberts. Are there any objections? Alternative nominations? I can't see any. So we take that as confirming that councillor Eirin Morris will be the vice chair of the Governance and Audit Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And so then it's over to the last committee on the list, Democratic Services Committee. So we need to elect the vice chair, so I don't think I need to chair this part, do I? Because we have a chair. Is that right? I call upon Keith Roberts to chair this meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. We look forward to working together and I would love to ask for nominations for vice chair of the Governance and sorry Democratic Services Committee.
Mister Chair.
Firstly, I would like to congratulate you on your appointment as Chair of this important committee. And wish you well as Chair. I look forward to being a member of this committee under your leadership. I would like to propose as vice chair councillor Alwyn Watson if I may. Chair, congratulations. I may second that proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We got a nomination for Alwyn Watson from both councillor Kerwin Jones and councillor Dylan Riis. Do you have any other nominations? I see, don't see anybody objecting. No. Therefore, we move forward with Alwyn Watson as as vice chair of this committee. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much too and I look forward to working with you Chair.
Thank you Alwyn. Thank you very much. And I'll hand it back to David.
So from as far as I can see, I think we've gone through the agenda. Thank you all for your contributions this afternoon. Would anyone else like to say a word before we go? No, nothing to add. Thank you very much. I think we've gone through everything quite smoothly this afternoon. I look forward to working with you and congratulations to everyone who's been elected. And I'm sure we'll do a fantastic job. Thank you all. Well.